Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
I call this meeting to order of the regular city council in City Hall Chambers, 389 Spruce Street, at, what is it, 7:02 PM. If a clerk could please call the roll?
Yes, Joe Buganam?
Present.
Jody Hollingshead?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Ginny Celine?
Here.
Mark Downs?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Trumbull?
Mayor.
Okay, first item is the approval of minutes for August 26, 2025, special meeting minutes, and August 26, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections? Move to approve?
Okay.
Okay, by a commission. And then we have correspondence, which is All-Star Community Award Presentation, MPB Social Worker, Kelly Rice. I got fancy. Did you know anything about this before?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, oh, okay. So, I'm just gonna read from what the municipal league put this, put together here. So, like many of us, Morgantown has been searching for non-law enforcement outreach to help identify individuals in their community that were suffering with addiction, mental health issues, or homelessness, and connect them with the help they needed. Morgantown Police Chief Eric Powell created the position of a department social worker. Kelly Rice, an experienced licensed clinical social worker, was hired and helped define the role and establish reasonable goals. With support of the police department, Special Services Unit, Ms. Rice has excelled in her role, and together with the new crime analyst will soon be overseeing staff and provide much-needed help to the most vulnerable citizens of Morgantown. And this is an award that we received at the municipal league to the city of Morgantown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Did you listen?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda would be public hearings. We have none. And then unfinished business, boards and commissions. I believe we don't have any appointments, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And now we'll move on to the public portion, which will be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. You will be given four minutes to speak. Is that right?
Yeah.
And please state your name and address. We will have a list here of folks that have signed up to speak. You do not have to be on this list in order to speak. We'll just go through this list first. And the first person we have on the list is Hillary Woodrum.
Hi, good evening, folks. I'm Hillary Woodrum. I am a resident of Lower Greenmont. Very proud of my part of Lower Greenmont, I might add. So, I'm here to ask that you guys do consider to continue to allocate the CBDBG funds for a park or green space in Lower Pennsylvania Avenue. We've seen a lot of improvement in the area across the past few years, and that would allow a green space for the children in my neighborhood that play in front of my house in the street. They can have a nice, safer space out of the street to play, and it would just generally improve the area. I have to walk over a mile to access a park for my daughter, you know, considering walkability, so it would improve the walkability for Greenmont. And I also think, related to that, Greenmont is a neighborhood that people choose to live in for its walkability. So, the fact we don't have a park or green space yet compared to the other neighborhoods in town, you know, is a, you know, it's missing for the neighborhood, for people who value that. So, please, please consider allocating the CBDBG funds for Lower Greenmont. Thanks.
And next we have MJ Ahmed.
Ahmad. They've gotta swap babies. So, they gotta swap baby daddy.
Oh, okay.
You know, what's it like? Did my job? Yeah. Thank you so much for having me. Yes, my name is MJ Ahmad. I do live on Pennsylvania Avenue. And I'm here to encourage you to, you know, push that fund towards Greenmont. It's, that area doesn't need it. Pennsylvania Avenue has chronic problems, but I think the solution is not very hard. You know, the more money was sent down there, the easier it would be to solve this problem. And that's all I have to say. I have a baby to look after. Thank you so much.
Next I have someone named Annie Cronin Yurk.
A last for Yurk. You knew her. There's no you in it. First, I just finished watching the meeting from last week on YouTube. I wanted to thank crime reporter Ben Conley from Dominion Post. I thought I dropped my cane on the floor, and when I was going to leave, it was up here on again, and I thought that was pretty magical. And then I saw in the video where he'd come and picked it up, and therefore it was quite sweet. So, thank you, Ben. The last meeting, August 26th, confuses me. I'm here in my personal capacity, which is why I said my address. I've done that at every meeting I've spoken at. I've either said Annie Cronin Yurk, Human Rights Commission, or Annie Cronin Yurk, 7th Ward, because I don't like giving all my address, but, you know. I've been very clear, and it's personal, and it's not. I was speaking for the Human Rights Commission when I was up before. I am not now. I don't know that I will ever again. The rules for meetings, my understanding, are set out on the city website. So, I read those. And they're not terribly specific, but it does mention Robert's rules in there somewhere, which means that nobody is making personal attacks on anybody. And when somebody does, a person sitting on that side of the table should perhaps make a point of order. Say, uh, yeah. So, last week I learned that I am not a good attorney who doesn't do her work, and somebody else is a good attorney and looks deeper. At least I'm an attorney licensed practice in West Virginia. But this isn't about me. This is about the rules. Are we going to be professional and address each other as Deputy Mayor, Counselor Celine, Counselor Donovan, Clerk Wade? Or are we going to call each other by first name, Jamie?
Right.
Let's pick a lane here and decide what we're doing. I don't want everybody going by titles necessarily, but it does look pretty bad when somebody's up here calling each other by first name and talking about what great relationships you have, and not the other three. And I've talked about the appearance and propriety. I've talked about the rule of law, and those seem to have gotten nowhere. I don't know if my best is talking too quietly. That's possible. I heard you do that. But either it's okay to say whatever one likes about whomever, and we're just gonna let it fly, or let people tell you that you have festering souls. That wouldn't surprise me. That was not last week, to be clear. I understand that you're supposed to make the new set of rules, because they expire on June 30th, at the end of each council accession of council. I don't know when the last time was you made a new set of rules, but I would hope that you would take a look at that. Just tell me where I'm supposed to be going with this. Oh, and Deputy Mayor Butcher? I did say I was gonna talk about you. I wanted to thank you for what you said about trying to make the public portions more open, and communication more open during meetings and more hospitable, so that people feel comfortable saying what's on their mind. I just like what's on their minds, not being so personally hostile. Thank you.
Then I have... It says, I think says, something Kisses Sweet Shop? Yeah, you can let me know what I couldn't read.
It's Sherry.
Sherry Kisses?
Sherry, Essie Sweet Shop.
Okay, okay.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to show up tonight to say thank you, first of all, for the work that's been done so far as a small business owner. We really appreciate the cleanup and the houses shutting down. We've owned the building for about 17 years, and just the last five, four, three years just went down the hill. But now it's starting to go back up the other way, so we're very appreciative of that, because myself being there late at night felt very dangerous at times. I had to go out and tell people to get out of our parking lot, because they were going across the street doing some not-good business, if you know what I mean. So, I think putting in a park would be great. We get a lot of people from Interstate 68 that come in from all over to come to our shop. If you get on, if you Google Essie Sweet Shop, you can see our reviews, and it is a family atmosphere, so we get a lot of families that come and go. They really like the back deck and the creek, so it has a lot to offer to the community, I believe. And if you just keep putting those funds where it needs to go to get rid of those houses on Pennsylvania Avenue and put some type of park there, I think would be great. At some point down the road, we've had a lot of people ask if there could be a bridge. I think there used to be a bridge there. If we could put a bridge across the creek so it could be joined with the walking trail would be great. I don't know what that would cost. We did submit paperwork to maybe do something with that area where they turn around right in front of our shop. Maybe put in a place where we could have music, or, you know, community event like music, or some other type of entertainment. You know, if the neighborhood would be okay with that, nothing real late, loud at night or anything. But we do get a lot of people from all over, so to spruce that area up, I think, would be beneficial. So, we're just saying, if you could keep doing what you're doing, we would be very appreciative and be thankful.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what was your name, just so I can...
My name is Sherry, Monas M.
Okay.
And my husband's Essie, and our son's Essie. So, it is a family business and small business, and we have the Kona Ice Truck, so it's all ran out of that area.
Okay.
And we do get a lot of families with children coming and going, and some professional business people, so it attracts a lot of different, you know, a lot of college kids are coming over that way now. They know about us, so I think to get that just a little bit more cleaned up would be great, and I think it has a lot of potential. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then I have Leslie Nash.
Hi, I'm Leslie Nash. I am now in Woodburn. Moved from 2nd Ward earlier this year. So, unrelated to my other comments, real quick, I would just like to say that I emailed the city arborist last week and asked him a question, and he got back to me the next business day, which was really nice of him. He could not come look at my tree, sadly, but I do appreciate him being very prompt. So, thank you, Ethan. I'm actually here today to talk about, or actually raise a question about our camping ban. So, if council hasn't realized, this is our, like, one-year anniversary council meeting of the public hearing on the camping ban ordinance. So, that was September 3rd of last year. And when I realized that, and after I saw the article in the Dominion Post this weekend about how the, our housing voucher waiting list has actually been closed since February of this year, I went back and listened to some of the public comments and council discussions from the August 20th and September 3rd meetings from last year regarding the camping ban, and had a couple of comments from council that I wanted to sort of bring back to council and kind of request follow-up on. These are all sort of in the same vein. And so, starting on August 20th, some of the portions of council comments that stood out to me in reviewing that meeting was, you know, when discussing the role of police within the camping ban, quote, "I think we're asking them to help and find shelter, and it's our job, council's job, to help make sure that they have the resources that they need," end quote. Quote, "The idea," I'm assuming behind the ban, "is to develop more shelter. The idea is to develop more places for people to be and not be camping," end quote. Quote, "You work to develop more shelter spaces," end quote. A quote, "It is," quote, "it is to spur us all on to figure out more places that people can go," end quote. And quote, "I'm sure there are a lot of other ways we can address it, homelessness, that we can work on together," end quote. So, those are all from the August 20th meeting. I'm happy to provide timestamps and individual council members who said those things, if anyone is interested. On September 3rd, during council's comments, quote, "Another way to look at this, as is regulating camping, there's nothing that prevents all of us seven and the groups that are gathered here today working on services and temporary and permanent housing, but this is something that there has been urgency for because of the impact on people both housed and not housed, housed, its overall effect on community," end quote. And another quote from that same meeting, quote, "It lends an urgency to the fact that we need to get people into housing. When we talk to people who are providing services and they say it takes a year, that is too long for someone to be camping," end quote. So, now, a year after that meeting, and now that the camping ban has been on the books for, I want to say, three full months at this point, I am really interested to hear from council what has been done to ensure that we have more housing for people who are currently unhoused, whether that is emergency shelters, whether that's temporary housing or permanent housing, in terms of how many people have been housed since the camping ban has gone to effect to lend urgency to the situation? How many shelter beds have we added since the camping ban has gone into effect? And what have we done to ensure that people who are camping are, have been housed or are about to be housed? Thank you.
Right. Is anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Stephanie Hunt, 220 Front Street. I'm here to talk about the CBDAG funds for Lower Greenmont, or hopefully Lower Greenmont. They were allocated for a area in Upper Greenmont, and the funds didn't work out for that area, so keeping them in the general area just lower, I think they'll do even more good, especially with all the efforts we already have going on there. And so, because it was written for Greenmont, stays in Greenmont, seems like it's a natural flow of things. And then also, like Essie's, we have that great ice cream shop. Sprucing up that whole area, making it welcoming for all the kids in the area would be great. And also, I would love Halloween to be on Halloween.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Gosh, you are making so much noise, I didn't want to stand up because of it. Hey, Lindsay Jacobs, 5th Ward, Marion Street. Two questions for you all. I didn't get a straight answer. I don't, well, actually, I think Danielle attempted to answer the question with, to the best of her knowledge, last week. It's been a week. What conversations, if you can discuss this in your report out, have happened regarding the warming shelter for another week closer to fall to lower temperatures? Where are folks gonna go whenever it gets cold this winter? What, where's the urgency? What are you all doing? What is the city doing? What is the county doing? Where are folks gonna go? Where is the warming shelter gonna be? How is it gonna be staffed? Who's gonna oversee it? What are you doing to make sure that we have a fully-staffed, functional warming shelter? We had one last year. It was very dysfunctional. I know there are volunteers that are happy to report out and meet with you all and tell you why it was dysfunctional and how we can do better. But this cannot be something that we keep bumping year after year. It's totally unacceptable. The second thing I would love for you all to start having a conversation about, and I'm happy to be the first one to say it on the record, I'd love for us to start having a discussion about repealing criminal penalties, a portion of the camping ban ordinance. And I will be speaking with many of you individually about why I think that's an urgent priority for this council to take on, in addition to all the things that, the many priorities that I think are exciting, that each of you are championing, and I think that there are many other people that are gonna start pushing you toward repealing criminal penalties of the camping ban as well. So, but the thing I'd love to hear about tonight is what conversations are happening, not just from Danielle, Brian, who, you know, I feel like there are seven members of council, and a couple of you talk about housing and the warming shelter and homelessness. What are the rest of you doing? Where are you on this issue? There are seven of you. And I see you look to Danielle and look to Brian, and I know you two, you know, a couple of you are new, so I know you're getting your sea legs under you, but there are seven of you. What are you all doing? You got your camping ban. Where are you at? I'd like to hear from you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Troy Bush, Curly, a resident over in Westover. Just wanted to briefly ask city council to consider perhaps enlarging the scope for the area of people who can serve on the Human Rights Commission. I'm actually interested in serving on that, but saw that one has to be a resident of Morgantown. I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure if it was for Morgantown or for Mon County in general. I understand that Mon County is obviously a broad area, but I think that there might be some good in including a couple of adjacent districts in the metro Morgantown area if, you know, after an extended period of time, positions remain open. If there are people interested in other municipalities may have some insight. That's something I'd just like for the city council to consider, and that's all the I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to special committee reports. We have none. Since agenda, we have none. So, new business. Item A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2019, fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2023, and fiscal year 2024, annual action plans for the use of community development block grant funds, CBDBG funds. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
I was gonna ask if we can explain to you first.
Absolutely. Deputy Mayor Jamie Miller, I will provide a brief summary of the information that was provided in the packet. I know that there was a lot of information provided upfront on this item as we continue to communicate throughout the community what is being proposed. I also do have Chris Fletcher, who is with UDV, who is our CBDBG consultant. So, after I provide a high-level overview, if there are any questions that we would like to answer or discuss further, we're available for those. So, as mentioned, the proposed resolution today allows for the adoption of a substantial amendment to previous plan years related to our CBDBG funding. This proposed amendment's necessary to continue to respond to an ongoing timeliness workout plan that we've been using and executing related to these funds to ensure that we're compliant with HUD requirements. This realigns some funding away from projects that are unlikely to meet deadlines or other requirements under the program, and reallocates them to programs and projects that meet some of the standards and objectives of the program that's been set forward in our consolidated plan. So, a public hearing was published on Wednesday, July 30th, to notice that we would be moving forward with a substantial amendment, and that outlines and specifies each year what funds are being allocated away from what project and to what project. So, it goes year by year, and it specifies the amount on each of those. This has been on display in the city offices, the library, the office of the Voe Park, so several areas, and it's accessible as well as online, and it also is included in your packet for tonight's review. There was a public hearing on August 19th on the topic. There was not necessarily a substantial comment on that item at that public meeting, but we did have an opportunity for the public to come forward and provide some feedback for our consideration and development of plan, similar to tonight, when the public had an opportunity to provide some feedback as well. There were two activities that had prior allocations that were either slow to implement or were not eligible. The first one was use of funds to address some unblighted property conditions through demolition. As we go through these processes, when it relates to demolition of properties, we occasionally run into challenges in the process that extend those deadlines. And so, when we run into those, sometimes when we have funding that has a deadline associated with them, it becomes a bit of a challenge. There were also some extended deadlines as it related to the funds being used for the Bartlett House. It took a little bit of a process of working with HUD through that, those discussions to be able to move forward. So, there are still funds allocated, and there is still demolition that is occurring using these funds, and we are back on track to be able to execute those. these funds, and we are back on track to be able to execute those demolitions under the timeline that we have put forward. The other item that we're allocating funding away from is a previously identified pocket park at the corner of White Avenue and Hitchens Street. You heard a little bit about that today. The primary driver of why we're allocating funds away from that proposed park was, as we were moving through this process, the U.S. Census Bureau revised its census tracts and its block group boundaries, and so said, "This property is no longer eligible for the use of the CDBG funds." So we did try to look around into the, the community of the Greenmont area to say, "How can we keep the funds in this area and achieve the goal of making sure that we're supporting the redevelopment that we've seen some success lately within this project?" So we are allocating towards improvements, towards a green space in the Lower Greenmont area. This is a project that was also part of the 2025 annual plan, and also includes some road improvements that would support this project as well for Pennsylvania Avenue and Decker's Creek Avenue. So this substantial amendment does not increase the city's total entitlement, we're not getting additional funds. This is just reallocating in order to ensure that we have meeting the requirements of the program and that we can continue to receive our CDBG entitlement funds going forward. Happy to answer any specific questions, and as mentioned, I have Chris on the phone as well.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody have questions?
It's very clearly laid out, and those are projects that we've been thinking about for a while, so it looks like a smart use of money, so we don't lose the money that we have and we spend it in a similar area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the public's aware, if we were to not spend this money, what would the consequences be?
So we are an entitlement community under the HUD program, the CDBG, which means we receive a designated allocation every year to be spent in low and moderate income areas for specific projects that we have to go through a, a five-year process for, an annual process. And, and if we don't execute the funds in a timely manner, we would be frozen and not eligible to receive future years of funding until we were able to draw that down.
Bad.
All right. Any further discussion? Call me.
Yes. Joe Bugan?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Okay. That is 7-0, passes 7-0. Next, we have consideration of approval of a resolution setting Morgantown's trick-or-treat date and time for 2025 and future years. City manager, would you like to?
Absolutely. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this resolution is set before you to propose the trick-or-treat dates for, for this year as October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That is consistent in what we've done in, in a lot of prior years. But the reason that it says on regular agenda for future, for more discussion tonight is we are proposing to create a, a standing resolution which would identify trick-or-treat as on Halloween, October 31st, each year from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It does provide some situations that may be determined that we need to look at. For example, if a, a major storm is heading our way, a hurricane, or, or if we have an event, for example, a home game against, and our allocation and our resources are taxed, we may in future years come back and have communication where we do not want to necessarily hold it on this. But this would make it where we don't necessarily bring this item forward to city council every year for consideration. It would, it would create a standing time unless there was a situation we wanted to make an exception for.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve now and forever. Second, please go.
Any questions, discussion?
I just, I guess my only question is why we didn't set it as a permanent thing previously? I know that one year they didn't have Halloween when it wasn't Halloween, they had trick-or-treating when it wasn't Halloween, and that-
That was over Mohawk Bowl, I think.
What's that?
It was over like a, when it was moved, it was because of a Mohawk Bowl, I believe, or at least a Morgantown High football game.
There, I mean, there is, there is a Mohawk Bowl this year, but the adult kids should be okay. And I don't think the game gets started until 7:30, so they got an hour to get to the game before they hit the field.
Yeah, for some reason I thought it was 6:00.
It might be, I don't know where they're-
I think it's a great idea. I think what happened before was, it was a shortened time period, and so people lobbied long and hard for a couple of years to get a longer time period so that it wasn't like one hour, and so that it wasn't early in the evening, so people wanted to have time to come from work and get their kids fed in a, in a costume. So that's how that was arrived at, and if we want to make that the order of the day, that makes sense. And if, somehow we need to make sure that every year we put out that press release just to remind people, number one. Number two, we could proactively send something to particularly athletic programming people, maybe even county people, but it could be at the college level, it could be at the high school level, just, just noting that that's what we're doing and that, and requesting that if they are scheduling, that they're scheduling at a later time if possible on those dates. I know they're probably not going to refrain from programming on those dates, but, and it's not always on a Friday or Saturday, but, but if we ask people to try to avoid, if possible, those hours, then our predictability will be sort of worth it because they'll know that's what we're going to do. And if they can avoid those times, or, or even part of those times, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. I, I anticipate this will help with our communication because we get questions about trick-or-treating out or hours earlier and earlier every year, so this will also help staff be prepared to answer those questions when they start coming in.
Yeah, so if we reaffirmed even earlier than this every year, yes, indeed, as per, whatever this is that we're doing tonight, as per previous directive, we're, we're having this every year and-
And also, I would add 6:00 to 8:00 is good. Feeling anything around 7:00, 7:30, they start dwindling, so, and I'm cold.
Yes, dark.
Any further discussion on Halloween? Clerk, if you could, please call them.
Yes. Joe Bugan?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
All right, and then we'll move on to city manager's report.
Yes, just two brief items for you all today. Staff has been reviewing and looking for different opportunities. There's been a, a real need and increase in desire for volunteer opportunities for cleanup programs, so staff has been throwing around different ideas of when we can do those, what themes we can create in order to generate some excitement and continued participation. I, I know that from a council member's standpoint, and a lot of you guys have engaged in a lot of these cleanup activities, so staff is looking at what programs they can continue to support as well. So they've identified some themes that hopefully will be rolling out throughout the year, and, and wanted to give advance notice that September 14th is an anticipated volunteer opportunity for a city cleanup, going with a theme of Mountaineer Mission Cleaning Gold. So this is the day after the Pitt game, and we'll be hoping that those in the community will like to come out from 10:30 to 1:00 and, and help with the community cleanup. So we'll put additional information out on that upcoming as well. Another, kind of save the date, October 14th, the MMPO is in process of updating their Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and they would like to provide a summary to council to review their plan as it, when it's in draft format. So a time has not been set for that meeting yet, that is not a council night, but wanted to make sure that was on your radar in order to save the date for that. And that concludes my report tonight.
Report from the city clerk?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. So I want to say to our citizens, serve, protect, belong, join the Morgantown Police Department. We are still short on police officers. Again, we have entry-level police officer exams on October 18th. We do have a list of folks who have already applied, and please check out our website. You can go to MorgantownWB.gov and go under Departments, Police Department, or you can find the Morgantown Police Department website, and their pages show all, many opportunities there for the, as a police officer, what you might be involved in. So we're just, I just want to shove that information out. Please share with your friends and colleagues that we are still looking for police officers. And then lastly, I just want to remind folks about a function that we have on our website, it's called NotifyMe. If you want to know what's going on in the city, there's a function on our website. If you go to the MorgantownWB.gov and you search NotifyMe, there's a place where you can select all different kinds of subjects that you might be interested in, media releases, bid awards, receiving agendas, and minutes for boards and commissions for council. So just sharing that to the folks out there and the public who would like to know what's going on in your city. That way, if something is posted on our website, it will immediately come to you, either your email or your phone, whichever you choose, or both. So I just want to share that with folks, that, that, that there is some good functionality on our website and ways to bring awareness to, about what's going on in the city. And that concludes my report.
And now, a report from the city attorney.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Be assisting with the property acquisition as well as supporting the design and contracting services in connection with the CDBG Annual Action Plan. And as you all know, this is an area where the Land Reuse Agency is also doing a lot of work, as well as our grant writing and other city staff, so also helping to coordinate those activities. Nice to see the community support for those initiatives. And also, I think you have now scheduled a date to meet with the state-level legislators as a council. It, it seems early, but that time goes quickly. Staff has started internal meetings to work on potential legislative session items. Morgantown's council has, for several years, presented, I think, a thoughtful and pretty focused plan or agenda to the state legislators at that meeting, and that, that planning process is essential to it. We've also reached out to the municipal league to identify items they may be pursuing or how we can coordinate those efforts. If council members have any input on items to be considered or questions about past or future legislation, please reach out, we'd be happy to support those needs. And that is all I have to report to them.
Thank you. Now we have reports from council members. Mayor Trumbull, would you like to start?
Thanks to Deputy Mayor Butcher for leading the meeting today in my absence. I am out of town until Saturday evening, but we'll be back in plenty of time for kickball games on Sunday, so I see, I see at least one of my teammates in the audience there. I just wanted to mention that the arts walks are now moving to Friday evening. The next arts walk will be Friday, September 12th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. That is also the weekend of the Pitt game, so hopefully lots of people will be in town and take advantage of that. And to address some of the, the comment from the public session last, or the public portion, I'm sorry, last Wednesday, some of the MCR board members met again with Mark Phillips of Catholic Charities. That was two meetings that we've had with him last week. And I think we, we came away from that with a better understanding of some of the limitations, and I have emailed back and forth since I've been out of town with city manager Miller, who gave me a few dates, and sorry I haven't gotten back to you on that yet, Jamie, I'm trying to see which dates work best for a few of the other MCR board members, but I am working to set up a meeting with city administration and MPD, some MCR people, and the Catholic Charities leadership to discuss the future of the warming shelter and where that may be happening, and also some of the effects that the, the camping ban seemed to be having on the Hazel's House of Hope campus. So again, out of town this week, but still emailing and, and looking forward to getting back and trying to get some of these things moving along. That's all.
Thank you. Councilor Abadah?
Sure. My own brief-brief, since we were just here last week, so it's a repeat of some things. The high school wrestling team is having their fundraiser for their girls and guys on September 21st at Morgantown High, which is a Sunday at 1:00. The First Ward, First Ward Neighborhood Association meeting is on 9/22. And in the spirit of Halloween, thank you to city management for allowing us to close Madigan Avenue down again, which is always safe for our pedestrians, and the adults pushing, struggling also appreciated very much. In addition to those that struggle to go up and down even a curb, it helps with them in getting around the neighborhood as well. And I believe that is all.
Thank you. Councilor?
I just want to make announcement that there'll be a concert at the Wilds Hills in Wilds Hills neighborhood. Chris Haddix will be performing on Thursday, September 4th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And that was only the announcement I had, but I, I did want to also make a comment since, you know, somebody's in the public seems to think that there's other council members here that don't care about the unhoused or don't do anything. That's just false, and it's insulting. I personally know that Jenny, Joe, and myself have done things behind the scenes and, you know, frankly, I'm just so tired of it. The camping ban, every word of that camping ban was on the ballot for people to read in the community. They chose to keep it. So to go and change it, amend it, is, to me, again, an insult to the people of this community that chose to keep it. So, you know, I just, I just, it's just not right to come in here and take pot shots at some of these council members. I know them personally, I know what I do. You can mock me and mouth me, I, I don't get it. Or you take shots at Annie over there for getting the stats and then come after us. It makes no sense. We're all trying to make this better and help people. We do our own different things. Brian does something different, Danielle does something different, I'm sure Jody and Mark do, but it just, I'm just tired of it. So that's the end of my report.
Councilor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just returning back from vacation from last week, so I'm getting caught up on emails and happenings. A couple of announcements before you head down to the arts walk on September 12th. The South Park Association of Neighbors Span's block party is happening, so come say hi. The MHS band is kicking it off at 5:45. We've got some new officers to introduce everyone to that we're very excited about, and we're going to give everyone kind of a fun opportunity to let us know what you see in the future of Span's new era. I also, I, I wanted to send a kudos to MJ and Hillary for making, speaking at the public portion happen as parents of a young kid. That's difficult to do. It's difficult to do anything in the evenings when you've got kiddos, and I just appreciate it when people, even with little kiddos- it when people, even with little kiddos, anyone prioritizes speaking at these meetings. I know it's, it's not easy, and it has to be thoughtful and prioritized, and I appreciate Lindsay and Leslie, thank you for the push. Thank you for coming to advocate for our neighbors, and I just, I just wanted to say thanks for the push. I think we needed it. And then, I think, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yes, let's see. First, first item would be if you're a part of the Suncrest Neighborhood Association, or if you tend to go to our picnics, which we're all welcome to come to. We are busy scheduling the end of September, having a, having a, usually it's cookout, but having a neighborhood party. It'll either be Thursday, the 25th, or Sunday, the 28th. Brian and I are advocating for the 28th, preferably a little bit earlier in the day, but we're, there's four of us that work on this, and so we're, we're working on scheduling. So we will, we will have an announcement, hopefully soon, in a day or two, and we'll send out some sort of an announcement. I appreciated the university scheduling Community Day, which they have done in years past, and they're, we attended the football game, spoke with other public officials and staff. It's a good, good time to get more on the same page with our, our largest, I don't even know what to say, educational institution, I guess, in town, and just appreciate the time to be able to speak back and forth. I agree on that it's important to work on the legislative session items, and so, and it's good if we can maybe have a larger list, and then maybe narrow them down, or whatever we can do to come up with a workable, manageable list, and particularly with whatever the municipal league is working on, or maybe we can mention to the municipal league what we're, what we're interested in working on. With regard to the winter shelter, it is always a difficult issue. We think we have it licked one year, and then it will come back the next year, and the space has been reprioritized, or whatever happened that we thought we had it in place. So even when you think you have it in place, it becomes a problem, and I guess it's, part of it is the nature of having space that you just use part of the time, then it is easy for it to get reallocated a different way, because it's there. So it used to be something that was mainly taken care of by social service agencies and with our, with our support. I think it still needs to be partnership, and so having ideas about how it can be accomplished are important from our perspective, but also from the perspective of people who have potential spaces and people who have potential staffing. And so I appreciate the efforts of our mayor and our deputy mayor and everyone else on council who supports a winter shelter and working with our county commission. I think it's a super important issue, and welcome people's ideas and the ability to participate in moving forward on ideas and then operationalizing them. So, thank you for your work, Mayor Trumbull, and Deputy Mayor Butcher, and everyone else here who I know cares about this. And I think, a couple other things, but we'll work on those later. Thank you.
Counselor Dallas?
All right, I'll start. I mentioned this last week, but I'll, I'll bring it up, I'll mention it again. The South Hills Neighborhood Block Party is on Sunday, the 7th, from 4:00 to 7:00 in South Hills. I know all of council and some of staff were invited, so hope folks can make it. I'll say, I don't think that the city bumped the Warming Shelter as a priority. Funding was provided in this year's budget, right? It was, it was definitely a priority. To Jenny's point, some things happened. Clearly, some things happened since we don't have a solution, right? And that's, that's not acceptable, because the winter's about to turn, and we should absolutely have, have this figured out. I was prepared tonight to ask for a work session on this, on this matter, but considering Mayor Trumbull's report, let's let that play out. But if, if this doesn't get solved soon, it's got to be all hands on deck, people, or, or, or it's going to turn, it's going to turn real bad real fast. Let's see, from, from a housing perspective, I, I know there's a lot of concern about housing. I worked in the housing business, and, and housing is a huge priority for me. When I ran for this seat, I've got pending legislation on housing, and, and, and I know, I know Deputy Mayor Butcher has housing legislation that has been pending for a while now. I'd like to see this stuff move forward. We have, again, in the spirit of being patient, we have a housing strategy that is queued up for presentation at the Committee of the Whole on September 30th. If you're interested in housing, I encourage you to attend. And let's see what staff comes back with, and, and make our plan from there. I've resolved myself to do that, and afford them the grace to, to hear those solutions, and then work together to prioritize. So, so I just mentioned that for folks that maybe weren't aware that that session was coming up. It should be, should be good. You know, housing, housing supply inside the city of Morgantown hasn't changed for a long time, and our population hasn't changed either. Several meetings ago, I mentioned that, I reported that our population's been flat for over 10 years. But popular, the population outside the city of Morgantown has grown by 6% within the county. So that puts a strain on housing supply in Morgantown. It artificially drives up our prices. We have got to get, we've got to get ourselves in a position where we can respond with density, with, you know, creative solutions, with multifamily, considering conditional use or overlays, accessory dwelling units. There are a ton of different things we can do. So I look forward to the report. I look forward to moving forward after September 30th with, with a plan to, to improve our situation. It won't happen overnight, but I'm ready to get to work. Let's see, I had the opportunity to lead an opportunity tour, opportunity to lead an opportunity tour, last week, down High Street. We had, it was a tour to review new businesses, review places for sale or lease in the community with interested parties. We had about 50 folks turn out, which was a tremendous response. I think, to me, it highlights the interest in our city core, which, in my view, has been neglected for some time. So I look forward to also working on, working on that issue. We've seen a number of businesses close recently, Permani Brothers, Dollar General, Angotti Straffus, Bubble Fish, et cetera. That's, that's a trend, right, that we have to respond with policy solutions that turn that around. So I wanted to make everyone aware of kind of that trend, because it, things kind of happen, and you maybe don't take notice of them, but, but many do. So I look forward to, look forward to working on it with you all, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's grace and patience with me in my first meeting at Jared. What I do have to say tonight is I bring this up as merely a logistical matter, so I do want to have like a back and forth discussion. I know we don't normally respond in reports, but I would like to just discuss this as a logistical matter, not the content or anything like that of what I'm about to talk about. And I would actually like to propose a work session, starting at 6:00 for our next, however many meetings it takes. Folks in the chamber may have noticed, we did not have a special meeting tonight. Our interviews still exist, and they're there. I talked with the clerk before the meeting, though, about if anybody's like really dying to get interviewed right now, and she said no. So I would propose that we have a public work session, starting at 6:00, or we would normally have our interviews to discuss how we're going to address the Warming Shelter. What I would suggest is that we invite Catholic Charities and various other folks to come, and we'll hammer out a plan an hour night, every night, until it's done, and it's solved. We figure out space, or whatever else we need to do. Like I said, that's open for discussion, for whatever people think about that.
I think it's a great idea. I think I would have some sort of a combination of, I don't know how you're going to do it. Somehow, you need a reasonable number of people to talk.
Yeah.
So you could have a portion of it that was, I'm just hearing this just now, so I'm, I'm weighing it.
I was going to talk to you about it more, but...
If you, if you did, if you did have sort of a public portion for some part of it, and then if you kind of brought it back to a discussion, and you had some of the principals from the different organizations, sort of in a circle, and you kind of brought in public comment, and then you had kind of a roundtable kind of discussion after that, or some, something where you can get people discussing. It's harder if you have a lot of people to have a discussion, which we have tried before in the housing issue, and it was really difficult. You know, when you have 40 or 50 people trying to talk, or even 30 people trying to talk, if you could keep it to this group and another eight or something, I don't know, I don't know what you've got. But I think it would be good to have both.
I would propose that it would be like working items, public portion, and us having reports back from organizations, and it could maybe even just be where staff normally is, probably the best thing.
Right, and you can add, I mean, you can add chairs and make a circle, because this would be a workshop, so it's not necessarily televised. You might want to just have it just be a workshop.
Any other responses, ideas?
We could do with legislation, the way we deal with legislation.
Yeah, I was thinking we could do it in chambers, though, just to, but yeah, I think Jenny's idea about on tables.
That would be a good idea.
When is the mayor's meeting with MCR?
It hasn't been said yet.
That should be sometime in the next 10 days. Jamie did throw out a few, a few options when she and MPD staff was available to meet. I'm waiting to hear back from a few people before we finalize the date, but I certainly think we should, we should allow that meeting to happen and see what Catholic Charities has to say at that meeting. And Brian...
Which, I'm sorry, I'm confused which meeting. Have them say like here, or at the MCR meeting?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
Like, which meeting were you referring to, MCR or a council?
Which meeting do we need to accomplish?
You said you were going to have Catholic Charities speak. Were you referring to the MCR meeting, or having them come here first to talk?
MCR has already met with Catholic Charities a few times. I've been working to set up a meeting with Jamie, Emily, Chief Powell, and Deputy Chief Reamer with Catholic Charities, and some leadership of MCR to loop the city in on the conversations that MCR and Catholic Charities have been having. So I'd like to see that meeting happen before we have a public work session, which I'm certainly open to. Are we still, has anything changed while I've been out of town? Our next meeting on the 16th, we already have a 6:00 meeting scheduled, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so then, for a work session, we would potentially be looking at September 30th, right?
Right.
When you're, when you're working, are you, Mayor Trumbull, are you working also with the county?
Jeff Arnett has been present at a few of these meetings as the county's MCR representative, yes.
Does the 30th work? I didn't know if he would met like... Yeah.
Will you have Matt by then?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, considering that's...
These that I've been working on should happen sometime likely in the next 10 days. It looked like most of the dates Jamie had sent were, you know...
Considering that's 28 days away, I think it's prudent to schedule the work session. Hopefully, it's not needed, but...
Well, hopefully, it's just a report about, here's what's going to happen.
Right, 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 yeah, fair enough.
And here's how we're going to fund it.
Yeah, or if they need anything additional from us, it'd be good to know, right?
And who's going to staff?
Does that work, Danielle?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. We should plan on that for September 30th, and I'll continue working to set up these other things before then.
Any further discussion on that? And that'll conclude my report. And then if someone would like to read us a bit of section...
Pursuant to legal, I move that we go into executive session for legal advice regarding operations and procedures of city boards and commissions, West Virginia Code 6-9A-4B12.
A7.
All right? Sure.